Welcome back, sir. How was it? Good morning and welcome to a special call meeting of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. It is 10:04 AM today is August 11th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Liz Houseman.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Lee Morris.
Present.
Vice Chair Natalie Hall. Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr. Commissioner Kadijah Abdul-Rawman.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item.
2-1-0589, adoption of the August 11th, 2021 special call meeting.
All right, let's vote on the agenda. We will proceed with the agenda as it's outlined. Let's vote on that. Motion to approve by Commissioner Morris, seconded by Commissioner Abdul-Rawman. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, Ball's in your court.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. Very much appreciate your time this morning for a review of the strategic plan for the next four years as well as a mid-year budget meeting. Anna Roach started us down this path back in 2015 of having a disciplined strategic planning process. I think it served us extremely well. We shifted those responsibilities over to Sharon with Anna's appointment as the Chief Operating Officer back in, we think, the first part of 2019. You're going to see a lot of information today that has sought your input on the front end as well as gathered a lot of input from a number of folks. So hopefully, this is going to meet with your expectations. Mike Rowicki, who has done an enormous amount of work just keeping the strategy bar and grill going through the pandemic, has taken this responsibility very seriously, so he'll be leading a lot of our discussion. Let me just say upfront a couple or three things. One was, we did push this out with the advent of COVID, so it would have been scheduled to have been done last year. And Commissioner, you asked a question about multi-year plan in the last meeting, so technically, we should have done this a year ago, but we had pushed this out. And you'll see, I think it's probably served us well because we've identified some issues that we really are going to put in front of you today and hopefully have a good discussion and gain some clarity from you on what the policy position is. So for today's meeting, the goals are pretty straightforward. We'll just go to the next chart and put that up, Tanya, or let's see, go to the next one, if you will. There really, and I'll just walk through these quickly. One is to review this plan. So while you've already seen it, you've provided your input, we've taken those edits. We want to make, ensure that now this final product meets with your expectations. We also want to thank you in advance for your role as a liaison for your colleagues on each one of these areas. And we think that that did serve us well previously. As you recall, we took your counsel to have two assignments to each area, and we've done that. And I think that will be most helpful to really being able to test the big ideas that are in front of us, gain some clarity. Obviously, having you discuss with your colleagues as you go along gives us a lot better insight before we bring something back to the entire board. So that's objective number one. Number two, which will be, I think, quite an involved discussion, is to look at the mid-year financial outlook. You've asked us for that before. This year, we're bringing it forward earlier. As well as, we've tried to collect all of the identified needs that have been identified. So whether it was from Justice Partners, from elections, from our own operational needs, we've identified both sources and uses of funds that are potential. We're not looking for decisions necessarily on either one of these today. So the plan would be to bring back both the plan for formal adoption as well as any financial adjustments that you'd like to make from a mid-year perspective in the next board meeting. So giving both the public as well as any other, you know, internal interest parties another opportunity to talk with you. But we did want to put it and be responsive to your desire to have this as soon as possible, so you'll see that today. And then the third is what I referenced in terms of issues that have crystallized. I think there are some pretty salient questions in the Justice area, in the Elections area, and in Transportation, all of which you have discussed at previous times before. We've tried to put some rather specific questions in front of you to get a reaction in those areas today that would be helpful, I think, in terms of both planning and resource allocation going forward. I hope that you see this as an important part of effective governance, because while the day-to-day guidance that you give us, certainly the approval of all the items that come before you is critical, but this really does set the stage for multi-year views and investments and activities. So we believe that it served us well, and hopefully you'll see this being beneficial as you go through this today. And then lastly, I just want to make note of something that you'll see on some of the charts, but as we look back over the last five years, again, Commissioner Abdul-Rawman, I was thinking about your question and comment in the last meeting, we really have done significantly more over the last five years. So if you just look at it in a pure numeric standpoint, while the mileage rate has decreased over 10%, the amount of service delivered is up over a third in terms of dollars. And that means 200 million more dollars are supporting citizens today in this year budget than they were at least when I was first appointed, which was less than 600 million. While at the same time, you've achieved modest mileage rate reductions. And I think what you can also point to from the previous plan is huge improvements in libraries, obviously, facilities, IT systems, the website itself. I would contend that both the Behavioral Health and Board of Health model has been improved, brought into alignment more with where we potentially should have been. The Board of Assessors' performance has drastically improved over where we were. The City of South Fulton transition's been executed largely. The TESBLOST that we just now have put up for renewal didn't exist back in that timeframe, and that's a $550 million investment on behalf of citizens. In addition to that, an equal investment in our Public Works program has been teed up and approved by you and is in process of being done, another 500 million. So that's a billion dollars. In this plan will be yet another 500 million. That was North Fulton, will be another 500 million for South Fulton. So in total, you will be putting, and I know you're on a call, Commissioner Houseman, this afternoon with the administration about infrastructure, this is a billion and a half in infrastructure that you have overseen over the last planning period and now into the next one. And then lastly, maybe most importantly, I believe we have a much more engaged workforce with metrics, with a customer satisfaction goal that we consistently meet of 80% and a payment that they enjoy the benefit of. So that all being said, we want to get into this, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, roll through it. I think, again, more of the time will be spent on the mid-year review than on the planning side of this equation. But having a good plan, having strong financial management, and then I think having a team that's excellent execution are the, you know, the secret ingredients to our success. So we start with that opening. And I'll introduce Mr. Rowicki to walk through the charts now that you should have in front of you as well.
All right, you want to take questions as we go through, after the presentation?
I would take them as we go through. You'll see that the presentation is not long, it's pretty pithy, and I think it'd be obvious that we can take questions as we go.
Okay, can I go to the next slide, please? Okay. Again, Mike Rowicki, I am with the Office of Strategy and Performance Management. And today, I'm just going to walk you through some highlights of the draft strategic plan for the 21, 2021-2025 plan and give you some of those highlighted items that we want to review with you. This draft document was actually developed with working groups of all of the county departments. We worked with each of those departments throughout the last year and a half to develop the plan so that each of them had inputs into the specific measures and the objectives that are in the draft that you see before you. So what I'm going to do is walk through this, highlight some of the items that we did two surveys of the Board of County Commissioners on, got your input on the document, the changes that you guys would like to see. We incorporated those, and I'm going to kind of highlight what those items actually were. Next slide, please. So the first priority area is Justice and Safety. And for this priority area, we have two priority area liaisons, which will be Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Abdul-Rawman for this area. With this objective, we did actually get some comments and changes for the measures within this. And for Justice and Safety, we saw the, a lot of the comments were that they did not see the courts highlighted at first, and it was at the end of the priority area and objective list. So what we did in this plan is we actually took that, moved that up to the front, so it was very clear that the courts were part of the measures and objectives that we were going to be seeking. Also, we were missing a juvenile courts measure, so we added that as one of the measures as well. Okay, next slide.
Yes. Commissioner Houseman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you, Mike. Where in this area are we looking at what we need to do with our jail facilities?
That, if you go back to the previous slide, please. So that is in ensuring that Fulton County meets or exceeds recognized standards for safety and justice functions.
Okay, so to break out specifics from these topics, where would we find that information?
That information is actually in the draft strategic plan document that we've circulated to you guys last week. And underneath each of these objectives are a series of three to seven measures for each of these, which specifically give items that we will be tracking for the next five years and reporting to you guys back.
All right, thank you.
As priority area reports.
Okay.
Okay, the next priority area is Health and Human Services, and for this, the liaisons will be Commissioner Abdul-Rawman and Commissioner Ellis. With this, through the surveys, we did not find any major objectives that the Board wanted to change or any of the measures. Everybody was pretty happy with all of the input and how we had designed this. The only comment that we did get generally was it was missing a COVID-related measure. Now, we will report that as through one of the other measures, which is kind of a broader measure that we'll be reporting, but that will be done regularly as we've been doing the COVID updates, and we'll take it and we'll provide that information to you guys on a regular basis. Okay?
Chairman, I had a question. Well, really, you come in. Thank you for saying that, because I was looking for that as well. And I think it's very important that we be fluid in the variance and how we respond. So I'm very encouraged by you, you know, bringing that to the forefront, because I think we will need to be on what I call the, not only the leading edge, but as we respond to it, or our protocols in place to respond. So thank you for bringing that up, because that was going to be my question.
Okay. Commissioner Houseman.
Okay, so I pulled out the document you were talking about a moment ago, and I don't see it outlined here or anything about the jail and the Justice and Safety item. I see physical security.
Reduce and maintain jail population at or below standards, which is under the...
So it's not this document?
No, it should be this document. It should be the full strategic plan that you guys have.
All right, all right.
And we'll discuss what the one pager is. What page is, Mike?
That is on page...
Five.
All right, I'll look at it, thank you.
Okay, next slide. The next priority area is Arts and Libraries. And for this priority area, the priority area liaisons will be Commissioner Houseman and Commissioner Arrington. For this priority area, there were no major changes to any of the objectives or measures that were provided. Everybody had seemed to say that the items that we were surveying were adequate for what we had provided in the draft document. Okay, next slide. The next priority area is Infrastructure and Economic Development. For this priority area, the liaisons, again, are going to be Commissioner Houseman and Commissioner Arrington. For this, generally, the Board felt that the objectives and measures were adequate, but there were some general comments to make sure that we were, when we're looking at businesses, doing business in Fulton County, I was trying to make it easier, we needed to make sure that we were working with Select Fulton and having clear measures as to how we were going to be tracking that into the future. Okay, next slide, please. The fifth priority area is Open and Responsible Government. For this priority area, your liaisons are going to be Vice Chairman Hall and Commissioner Ellis. For this, again, generally, the Board felt that we had a diverse group of measures and objectives that we would be tracking. There were some specific comments that were related to the elections measures that we were doing, and to make sure that we had been looking at those measures, and we made some changes to make sure that we are clear on what we're going to be measuring with poll workers and with the tracking of all of the elections performances for processing ballots. Okay, next is Regional Leadership. And Regional Leadership is a little different format than all of the other priority areas. For this, we have high-level items that, or programs that we wanted to take a look at over the next five years to work on. Those items are HIV, food insecurity, homelessness, data sharing, transportation, and housing. And with the comments that we got back from the survey, we made a couple changes, and those were related to the homeownership or housing. There was a comment that we needed to emphasize homeownership rights when we were dealing with housing, so we added that to that initiative for Regional Leadership. Okay, next slide, Liaisons' Roles and Responsibilities. This is one that we, as I mentioned, we have the liaisons that have been identified, and I believe that everybody has agreed with those assignments from the surveys that we've gotten the feedback on. We just want to kind of go over, again, high level, what the roles of the liaisons are and what we as staff are committed to doing to help you through this process. Number one is liaisons, we want you to provide input and feedback. That feedback that we get from you is important as to how we address the priority areas, any changes that we do, how we share the reports. So any information, feedback that you have is greatly appreciated, and we will set up meetings with you guys on a regular basis in order to get those feedbacks as we develop those reports. We want you to share your ideas with your colleagues. We think sometimes the best way to do that is if you guys are talking to each other, share your ideas of what you guys are looking to do and kind of see how things go and get that feedback before meetings. Understand general strategic issues in the priority areas. We will bring back through the Plan on a Page different strategic issues that we'll be addressing in that year, and we want to actually make sure that you understand what those things are generally trying to do, and then we can fine-tune that with your input as we go forward throughout the year. What staff is committed to you is, again, is engaging each of the liaisons in the planning process. We actually had each of the Commissioners could participate when we developed the strategic plan with the working groups, and we will continue to meet with you guys on a regular basis as we develop your specific priority areas and consult with you as those reports are developed. We will probably do that about 30 days out before the report is actually provided to the Board, making sure that we have all of the issues that you want covered as we prepare for that agenda item. And then we will review, again, everything with you before we take it to the Board to make sure that we are sending clear messages as to what the Board direction will be. With that, if you guys have any questions?
Mike, if I could, I was going to ask Anna to both reflect on how valuable the role of the Board has been in these areas since she really instituted this previously, and then also talk about the Plan on a Page. It's a method of communicating with the staff as much as anything else. I want you to ensure that you understand our use of that, and then tee up some of these questions that will be coming, that'll be coming later, so if she can do that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. So, you know, this was a task that we took on in 2015 to really change the culture of our workforce and of our government to be performance-oriented. And it started with the development of a strategic plan, which I'm proud to say that we've kept in that discipline since we've started that to this day. And the role of the liaison when we first started on this journey to be a more performance-oriented organization was critical to that, because part of it was convincing our stakeholders that we were now strategically focused and performance-focused. And you were able to amplify that message as a Board, not just with our employees, but with stakeholders outside of our governments as well. So I'm pleased to see that that has continued. I think to have you to be able to provide insight on strategic ideas that we brought forward and to be the executive sponsor, as we used to call it, when we were bringing those ideas to the remainder of the Board and help us socialize it with your colleagues was really, again, an invaluable part in us implementing this new culture in our environment. So I'm glad to see that that continue. The Plan on a Page is something that also came out of our original embarking on this strategic journey, and it was an effective tool to communicate with our workforce but also to communicate with our public. It really boils our strategic plan down to a single page. On the front page, you saw all of our priority areas as well as our key objectives within those priority areas. And then, most excitingly, we were able to highlight our accomplishments within those priority areas. It was important not just to state what our objectives were, but also to indicate to our employees as well as to the public the targets and goals that we set within those priority areas and what we accomplished in those priority areas. And why this was important as a tool to communicate with our employees is because it lent to employee engagement, and Kenneth can attest to that. Because for the first time, employees could see the work that they did reflected in our broader strategy, and that was interesting and appealing and engaging for them. On the backside of the Plan on the Page were things that we as an executive team and as a staff set forth as our aspirations for the upcoming year. And so you'll see, it says 2021 because we're in the middle of our planning year, but next year, you'll see that we're inspired of certain things that are within those strategic priority areas as well. And it is an iterative process where Mike and his team will engage with employees, talk about their performance targets, and what their aspirations and goals for the upcoming year are in those strategic priority areas. So this was a phenomenal tool. It has been for our organization, and again, glad to see, to see it continue. Next slide. So Commissioners, we're going to move into the second area of our strategic plan review, which is going to be led primarily by our CFO. I just wanted to make a few opening remarks. We'll start with talking about the mid-year budget projections as you've requested and as Sharon and her team have pulled together, but then we will tee up policy direction questions in three areas: criminal justice system, elections, as well as transportation. And what I didn't want to get lost is that we didn't pay homage to certain aspects up there, not because they weren't significant. So the reason you don't see Health and Human Services questions, key strategic questions up there, as an example, is that one, we wanted to be respectful of your time, but more importantly, we feel as an executive team that we have clear direction from you when it comes to certain issues within those areas. We know exactly how you feel about increasing investment in behavioral health services and the like, and so we wanted to spend time on the things where we're at a crossroads, for lack of a better term. And these represent the list of areas where we feel like we do need both discussion and direction in these three or four areas. So you don't see some things up there, not because they're not significant, but again, because we feel like there's enough direction on those priority areas, and so we'll focus on these for this discussion. I'll hand it over to the CFO at this time.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I really like the change to liaison. It's a lot more easy for the public to understand our roles than executive sponsor, as nice as that was. I think the new term is very, very much more in line with really what our role is. When we did, started this years ago, we were doing quarterly updates on these priority areas. Are we going to start that back up again, I hope?
Yes, we're, go ahead, Sharon. Yes, we'll be starting those in probably 2022, once we are able to get through the remainder of our focus on our pandemic response and get back to measuring performance in each of the priority areas, both at the department level and at the organization level as well.
Well, again, I think that's really important for the public's benefit, to understand what we're focused on, what we're doing in those areas. what we're focused on, what we're doing in those areas, instead of just seeing contract items or whatever on our agenda that they have no context for. So I'm really looking forward to getting that going again. The area of regional leadership, that's a new one. And while I certainly appreciate that you've got two of us assigned, if you will, to that, we are all involved in regional leadership issues. You know, you look at the list of things, we're all involved in some of those. So while it makes sense that you have certain ones of us that are, you know, heading that or being the liaison, I think the public needs to know that that's not limited just to those individuals, that we're all involved with leadership-type issues. And then the last thing I want to comment on, and you just briefly mentioned it, Ms. Roach, Mr. Manager, in your list of accomplishments, the glaring omission there was elections. We all know we've got a lot of work to do in elections, and I'm certainly glad that we will be focused on that area. Like it or not, we continue to get a lot of attention from the public in that, and it has become such an important topic to our community. I think it's also equally important that we show the community that we do indeed hear them and that we're going to work hard to make sure that that is run as well as all the other departments in Fulton County.
All right, Madam CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We could go on two slides forward, please. As the county manager indicated in his opening remarks, we did go ahead and prepare a mid-year review. As part of that, we wanted to revisit, if you will, how the last multi-year plan, how we responded, I guess, to the last multi-year plan. And what this slide shows you is where the millage rate was when we began this process in 2015, and you can see how we have, in fact, rolled the millage rate back in each year since then, and currently with the proposed millage rate of 9.33. That does reflect an overall 11% reduction in the millage rate. On the bottom portion of the slide, you can see what our revenue and expenditure performance has been during that same period of time. In the green are the actual results for each fiscal year, and with the exception of 2017, the year that we had our tax digest reset and property tax bills were delayed, revenue has been consistent, and our fund balance position has, you know, has continued to be strong, ending in 2020 with $227 million in fund balance. That's a, to the manager's opening comments, that change from 2015 really to the 2021 budget is the 35% increase in our expenditure plan that the manager spoke about. Next slide, please. This slide shares with you what the millage rate plan was in each of those fiscal years. So when we built out that first multi-year view, we put in some preliminary millage rates that the plan, you know, would sort of target. And you'll see that in each year, we have improved upon the plan, meaning that the actual rate that we approved was less than what the plan actually originally intended. And that is driven mostly by the fact that property values have been stronger than what the plan had built in. So we built the plan assuming a basic 3% change in value that we could, well, not change in value, but 3% growth in the digest that we could actually be able to capture that as real growth to support our expenditure needs and to be able to provide our departments with the resources that they request as part of the budget process. And in each of those years, our real growth in the digest exceeded what the expectations were. So that's what has allowed the actual rates to be below what we had projected in that multi-year plan. Next slide, please. This slide is the very high-level preliminary projection for 2021. At this point, we still have not received our property tax billing information. The board will act on the final millage rate at our next meeting. We expect and hope that property tax bills will come out in mid-September or early October. So the revenue picture may change based on what the actual billing generates, but this is our preliminary estimate. 734 is our revenue projection this year. The budget staff completed an expenditure review of all of the departments' salary and fringe benefits, as well as the operating portion of their budgets. The $732 million is the projection based on that review. It assumes the salary savings that have been accrued through the first six months of the year, and then the operating analysis that was completed. The staff did a line-item review, as well as looking at some historical trends in the operating spend categories to come to this estimate. They also shared their calculations, their estimates with the departments, and we did receive some feedback that allowed us to make some adjustments to the projections included. So with $734 million in revenue, 732 projected expenditures, that would leave us with a fund balance of $229 million at the end of 2021. We have delineated the fund balance amount there to show you the portion that we would need to carry forward into 2022 to support the COVID response plan. If you'll recall, in our COVID response updates, we have allocated our resources that we set aside this year out of our emergency expense reserve fund. A portion of that is being held in reserve pending the receipt of FEMA reimbursement for all of the vaccination and testing expenditures that we've incurred this year. So we wanted to make sure that we delineated that, that that piece will need to be carried forward into 2022 to continue to support that effort. Next slide, please.
Before we leave that one.
Yes, sir.
In the projection numbers, and I know there's a slide later on with department by department, when you sat down with the departments, did you include in projections some of their wish lists that weren't necessarily, that I think we're going to address later on?
These, the numbers within the 732 do not include wishlist items, and I'll give you an example. We'll talk about the sheriff's department. They, so this number reflects what the sheriff would fully expend this year based on the savings that have accrued the first six months and what it looks like they're spending on their operating budget through the first six months, as well as what their historical spending pattern has been. The sheriff has asked for his salary savings to be reallocated for him to be able to use. The salary savings are not reflected at this point as being expended in this $732 million, but we have them on another slide to show you that there's a request against that.
Really, the short answer is this is establishing the sources of funds, right? So there's close to $100 million in revenue and expense projected underruns, which then would go against what we believe are the either wishlist determined needs that need to be considered at mid-year. So you'll see both of those coming, both of those numbers coming.
So in your example, Sharon, the desired reallocation of salary savings is not included in this projected.
Not in that 732, but it is on a later slide. Yep. Next slide, please. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hausman, Commissioner Ellis, Commissioner Abdou-Rochman.
Yeah, just one quick comment that might be helpful for, again, the public to understand our revenue stream. When you've got the millage rate listed for all of these years, it might be interesting to see the value of a mil.
The value of a mil?
Yeah, because that's gone up too, as we work, so the millage rate's going lower, but the value is going higher. So that's how, I just think it'd be clear for the public to understand.
Thank you. I think we could probably do that.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, and you can maybe comment on, I guess, from this next slide, but on, since we're here, on the revenue projection, I think you said you were still waiting on specific digest information, correct?
We have received the estimate, which is what we've based the projection off of now.
What are the general assumptions on, that you've used for revenue for, on this slide, for 2021?
Well, the general assumption is we used the digest estimate that we were provided. We used the rollback rate, the 9.33%, and a 96% collection rate. That's the basic assumption there. The rest of it is looking at actuals through the first six months of the year, comparing that to our original budget, and then looking at the next six months of the year for things like sales tax, the local option sales tax, motor vehicle, TAVT, understanding that we'll be getting a significant amount of tax commission receipts coming in in the last half of the year. So we're basing all of that off of what, those things that are connected to the digest get based off of what the digest is producing. And the other items that are not tax-related, we're basing that off of actuals through the first six months plus a projection of the next six months.
So I guess we're maybe, let me narrow it down, so two specific questions. This is really more on the property tax end of things. So I guess the growth in the digest, we feel like we've got a pretty good estimate of that.
Yes, sir.
Correct, right. The collection rate, I know we typically pegged that in terms of at 96 in terms of estimating and all that. Our historical, we look back over, you know, three, four-year period of time, you know, excluding the one-year phenomenon. What is our typical collection rate?
In our fiscal year, like by the end of December, it's 94 to 97, I would say, on average. I mean, it's varied in each year. We based the budget this year off of 94, but we've based the projection off of 96 because last year we collected 96-plus through the end of our fiscal year.
Okay. And then on the, just while I'm on this, I know it's jumping ahead a little bit, but the, as we're building out projections going forward, what is the assumption we're using for growth in the digest?
It's 3%.
Are we using the same collection rate, or are we varying that?
96%.
Okay. All right, just, all right. Well, maybe when we look at that next slide, to me, that doesn't necessarily add up that that's the case. But, okay. Looks low. The revenue projections on the future years, if those are the assumptions, look, to me, lower than what they would play out to be in 2022. I guess this seems lower, but anyway, keep going.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Abdou-Rochman.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Ellis asked a question, and you've already answered it, so thank you.
Commissioner Hausman.
So I think we're all on the same train of thought. So you're basing it on 93%, which is lower than we've ever done before, since I've been here, anyway. Is that because of projected, I thought you said 93% is your collection rate?
No, 96. This year, what we've included in the projection for this year is 96%.
Okay, I wrote down 93%, so I heard that wrong. So you're not expecting, then, any decline based on economic conditions because of COVID with people not being able to pay their property taxes?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next slide, please. This next slide is provided to, to really give you a view of what a multi-year plan might look like for the next three or four years, based on two different methods. One, on the left-hand side of the screen, assumes that we would continue with a millage rate rollback and, you know, in each fiscal year, rolling back for the change in value that's due to reassessment, not for new growth, but for the piece that's associated with reassessment. And then the slide on the right is provided to share with you what, again, these are all preliminary projections, but what the picture may look like if the millage rate was held consistent into the future at the 9.33 mils. Next slide, please.
Yeah, and this is the slide that's, I mean, I guess to me is a little bit confusing. So if we, if you're saying that we were using a 96%.
Yes, sir, 96% collection.
To stay across the air, and we're assuming a 3% growth in the digest.
Yes, sir.
But our revenue pickup in, and assume flat millage rate is less than 1%. So I'm having a hard time following what's going on there. You follow me?
Well, on the left-hand side, the assumption there is that the millage rate declines each year. So on the left, that 2022 millage rate would be 9.19.
Yeah, I get the, I get the assumption on the assumed rollback on a certain level, although we've tended to flow this higher, and I think, I'm not really sure that we figured out a great way to figure out just sort of the natural roll-off of our floating homesteads where we're picking up stuff. But I don't understand that if it's at 9.33, how that's, how the revenue pickup is only, and we've got a 3% growth in the digest, how that's the pickup is 0.9%.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Good morning. The assumption is that in 2022, the millage rate is going to go down to 9.19.
Now, I'm not talking about the left-hand side. I'm talking about the right side, assuming the millage rate's kept at 9.33. And the 741 contrasted with 734, if you're And the 741 contrasted with 734, if you're telling me, rev, millage rate stays the same, digest grows at 3%, and you assume collection rate at 96%.
One thing is, for this year, we do have a higher, we're projecting a higher property tax collection than what we had. That's because, you know, we do have a prior year, prior year property taxes that is coming in at a higher rate than what we initially budgeted. And we're not assuming the same thing, you know, on a going-forward basis. That's one difference.
So James, can you go through the details of the revenue outlook?
Good morning, Commissioners.
James, can you turn the microphone on, the button? There you go.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm James Hoosier. I'm the Budget Manager. Commissioner Ellis, to answer your question, I'm looking at the right side of the screen. That one includes a millage rate at 9.33%. So the number that you see over there is the consolidated number of revenue. It includes both current year and prior year. The question is related, actually, of why 2021 is so high and why the difference that you see is so small. What's happening in 2021 is we projected a prior year revenue, which is approximately 3% of the digest. 3% of the digest, and that's what we project every year. But in 2021, our actual collections are something that are way higher than the 3%. And the reason for that is likely because the appeals come beneficial, came beneficial to accounting, which means there were a number of appeals in the previous year that rather than us receiving, let's say, 3% of the digest, which is the millage per revenue around, we're looking around $60 million per mil, so 1% represents around $6 million. So prior year, we have calculated around $18 million of prior year revenue. The revenue is actually coming around $27 million. That's a $10 million gap. So if we take that one out of the equation here, revenue in 2021 will have been around $724 million. And then you can see that increase that you were talking about with a 3% increase in the overall digest.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, I mean, by betting, I would say, if we held that millage rate at 9.33, that revenue for 2022, when we're sitting here having this discussion, next year is going to be projected to be a lot higher than 741. It's going to be closer to 750 and 755. I mean, that's just my, seems like we have the same conversation, sort of a play for it every year. And I recognize we're trying to be conservative with it, but I don't know, that, anyway, I'd just say that, that revenue figure of 2022 just seems somewhat understated to me, holding it, holding it and knowing what we're going to see in terms of growth in the digest. We know what residential real estate growth is. It hasn't been factored in. It will come through. It just seems like that, that number's a lower number.
Commissioner Ellis, I think the real unknown in the equation is the level of appeal settlement. You know, I mean, we do make an assumption of what the appeals will be, but then, you know, the settlement is something that takes a period of one year or even, you know, more than one year to.
You're talking about a settlement of appeals?
Of appeals, yes, exactly.
I mean, what's our, I mean, our run rate of appeals has been significantly lower, you know, the past, last year was really low. I mean, I don't know, we know what our numbers look like this year.
I think we had about 20, was it 20,000 or 18,000 appeals last year, Sharon, from what the accessory just told us.
Right, and then, you know, the significant, I mean, and then your residential appeals, I mean, the net change and the impact of these after these, you know, is not that significant because of, you know, kind of the floating aspect of so many of these, these things. So, anyway, I just, I mean, I don't want to belabor the topic, but it just strikes me that that revenue peg on the right-hand side is a little bit understated, and it could be moved up somewhat, just based on what we're seeing in terms of natural growth in the digest.
Okay. Commissioner Morris?
Yeah, great, great points, Commissioner Ellis. And it's certainly been my experience that the Finance Department has, has been conservative in its estimates and projections, which is a good thing. Actually, I'd rather than be conservative than, than too optimistic, because then, then that gets us in trouble. And, and again, I understand now the point about 2021, projection being loaded with prior year revenue that was unexpected, and so you wouldn't expect a 3% increase in that number moving into 2022. But all other things being equal, I think your points are well-taken. The thing that may not be equal, I was quite concerned with COVID and seeing businesses go out of business and, and the effect potentially on the commercial property values. And I, I talked to a lot of my friends in the commercial and development industry, and they said, "Well, you know, 2021 isn't going to be too bad because the big tenants are still paying their bills, and on January 1st, 2021, things, things will probably be okay." But most of them have said the real potential negative impact on commercial values might be January 1, 2022, when, when these folks stop paying their rents and maybe have stopped already. So maybe not in the big office buildings, because those big tenants will tend to pay, but in those smaller commercial properties. So, so that, that may be a concern that makes things not, all other things being equal. Thanks for your comments there, Bob.
All right, Madam CEO, strike that. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We can move to the next slide. Commissioners, this, this slide is provided to you to identify all of the items that have been brought to our attention for consideration for, you know, mid-year funding, or some of them came to us as soundings requests. So we have provided you with the full list of the items that we, we know of through yesterday. At the top of the list, the items that are identified there, the District Attorney's Salary Savings. She has asked for her salary savings to be reallocated, a portion of that towards some temporary employees for her office, and a portion of that towards some operating expenses. The arts, we used 200, we used a portion of the art salary savings to fund the additional funding for the legacy partners, and then we sounded the balance over that was, that was needed. The sheriff has asked for 3.4 million of his accumulated savings to use towards a number of different request vehicles, equipment, and supplies. And then in addition to that, he presented at the last meeting a request for the contract, the MOU of Cobb County, for inmate outsourcing. So those items total about $10 million of, you know, of savings that ultimately will be used at this point. So where the manager had indicated there was, you know, a little less than $100 million available, this $10 million is already, has already been requested and is being utilized pursuant to those requests. And then the, the balance of the list, which totals 22.7 million in 2021, and then would have a recurring cost of 15.14 million in 2022, are items that have, have been either addressed through presentations to the board or have come up through the, the soundings process. I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you, you may have about, about those items, but they're, they are items from the District Attorney. Some of that are items that she spoke to the board about in her presentation. The building security item, since we have reopened all of our county facilities, we will need to put some additional budgetary resources towards our building security, primarily for the security contract. The medical examiner's office is having issues recruiting and retaining MEs. Mr. Adams and Mr. Herman have been working with that office to identify a compensation strategy that would allow us to move forward with effectively recruiting and retaining MEs, so we've, we've shown you that. We've previously presented to the board the elections update, and the board has already provided soundings once this year for elections. There are some additional equipment needs that have been identified, as well as the funding for a professional services contract for a business process review for the Elections Department. In the board's last two meetings, you have talked about the Arts Contracts for Services program and providing some additional resources to, to that program, so we made sure that we added it to this list as well. The Budget Office had received some soundings requests for magistrate probate and solicitor court for a number of different reasons, equipment, positions, vehicles, and such. Additionally, we did ask specifically the sheriff and the district attorney to submit to us any other requests for funding that they may have, and what's identified here on the list for the sheriff relates to, to that supplemental request. He's asking for funding to refund some positions that he has unfunded during the course of the year, as well as funding for some additional vehicles, equipment for the vehicles, and some other, large equipment items. Senior Services, there's been a request made for additional resources for QLS, so we made sure to include that. We also, as a result of, of the changes that the board made at the beginning of the year in providing the sheriff with the resources to raise his starting salary for his deputies and detention officers, we have a pay equity issue between our law enforcement agencies. And again, Mr. Adams and Mr. Herman have been working with the county marshal on identifying what the cure would be for, for that, and there is a funding request associated with that. And then items that we have been working on this year but have not yet presented to the board. One is the, the HR department has been working on a comprehensive salary survey. We did indicate to the board that the first thing we would bring back would be the elected officials portion of that, as well as the department heads in key positions. And Mr. Herman and, and his office are working on finalizing that, but we wanted to make sure that we got a preliminary number out in front of you on what those, those associated costs may be. And then lastly, on the list is the consolidated warehouse that was presented to the board at the last meeting, the, some preliminary estimated costs associated with entering into a lease for a consolidated warehouse. And the Department of Real Estate and Asset Management is still in negotiations with the potential landlord on that, so these are estimated costs at this point. So that is the, the list of the additional requests for funding that we have received this year to be considered against the resources that we believe that we will have available. And we did want to show you, you know, what the current year impact would be, and then those costs that have a recurring nature to them. Mr. Chairman, I can take questions on this now, or?
Okay, that's a good point. Commissioner Ellis, Commissioner Hausmann, Commissioner Harrington.
Yes, so a sort of macro question is, you know, we've been, presented this, and it's not in here, it's not noted in here, but I think, given the extent of the funds and giving how much, some of the stuff that we are talking about doing intermeshes with this, I think it needs to be factored in, is the, these American Rescue Act funds, and to the extent, you know, what have we done in analysis around these specific requests? And are there a portion of these which should really be considered for utilization of that funding? And I'll give you an example, you know, to me, you know, obviously, we proved a significant amount for the court backlog project, right? The cause and effect of COVID closing down of courts does definitely increase our inmate population. You know, so should we not be considering the cost of inmate outsourcing through the use of the American Rescue Funds? You know, that's, you know, that, to me, is something that ought to be on the table and we ought to talk about. I think, you know, certainly there's some other things on here, I think that, you know, that are givens that we clearly should do, stuff with the ME, the magistrate court, probate court, solicitor, and marshal. You know, and I think these are probably more, you know, kind of recurring expenditures and some stuff that we just need to do to address staff. You know, but the items that are potentially more non-recurring in nature and/or potentially, you know, relate to, you know, the impact of COVID, I think we need to maybe potentially sort of look at some of these and, and I know we try to be conservative in terms of keeping a reserve and waiting on the stuff for reimbursement from FEMA, but I think some of that stuff ought to be on the table. And to me, the, the most obvious one would be potentially this inmate outsourcing contract.
Commissioner Hausmann?
Yes, I, I agree with that. I also think that perhaps some of the medical examiner items would fall into that same And I also look at year two of the inmate outsourcing, and, you know, I can't help but just think that's just not a wise use of our funds for a temporary Band-Aid solution as been mentioned by a couple other Commissioners previously. And honestly, with, I think a lot depends on the leadership changes in Atlanta after the next election, on whether or not that's a real, something that we should plan for. I've talked to many folks in Atlanta that are willing to work with us on the Atlanta City Jail situation, so hopefully, you know, that won't come to fruition, that we need to spend almost $15 million, you know, really leasing a, a solution, even though it's temporary in nature. Where are we with the discussion on the warehouse, consolidated, separate? What, what direction do you think we're going in at this point?
So, Commissioner Hausmann, we do plan to bring the lease for the warehouse forward for the board's consideration at the 18th meeting. There was no decision when presented with the two options at the last board meeting from the board. I think the vote was 3-3.
Right.
So that will come back before the board again, but we'll also have the lease for the consolidated warehouse on the agenda.
Okay, I, I was under the impression that you were going to go back to the District Attorney and talk through if they were in, in, willing to share, or if they really wanted something separately. Has that happened, or is that happening?
So we haven't discussed specifically separate, I think, I think the District Attorney has been very explicit that she wants to be in a separate facility.
Correct.
I'm not sure of the value of additional conversation in that regard, but again, we continue to conduct tours of the facility. Tim Diamond has invited the board and other elected officials there, so I, we, I'm happy to extend that invitation to her again.
This board?
Again.
I haven't been invited.
Actually, Commissioner Hall reached out to us to ask to see. Actually, Commissioner Hall reached out to us to ask to see the facility.
Okay.
And so that invitation is extended to everybody else, but you're correct, Commissioner, she did reach out to us.
Okay, that makes better sense than what you said. I really think that we have to proactively work with our constitutional officers on this item, instead of bringing it back again and it going nowhere. Let's figure this out. You know, I think we've got to figure this out. I personally don't like the idea of leasing anything. I think we have the resources to, you know, not be in a position where someone could terminate a lease on us and then we have to scramble. So, you know, I would prefer us doing some long-range planning on our facility needs that do not include leases. But I also think that we have to make sure we're working with our constitutional officers to try and provide them really what they need, not something that maybe have to be undone in four or five years. So I want a solution here.
Commissioner Arrington?
No, I mean, I think, again, I think her position's fairly clear, and it's, you know, it's her view that keeping that separate in terms of warehousing space for evidence is a requirement to keep that evidence secure. I'm not sure, and her folks have been on the visits, we have interacted with them, as well as with the sheriff, and I think I've talked to him as well, and he believes even for evidence in his case, it also needs to be separate. So I don't think that there's a, if you're talking about a solution, I think the solution is they desire a separate facility. So there's not a solution by us having more conversation with them, that they're going to have a eureka moment and want to be in the consolidated facility. So that's not going to happen at this stage of the game. And there's probably good viewpoints on either side of this. In other words, it represents an incremental cost, but maybe it represents less risk. I think that was the point that was made in the last meeting. We believe at the facilities level in that it only represents 5% of the potential utilization that consolidated warehouse, and all of that consolidated warehouse is not used in the current programming. You could build out a space there that would have separate entrances, separate security, ample space. So in many ways, those risks could be mitigated. But further conversation about it is not going to resolve that.
Well, and I don't presume to tell any of y'all what the best plan is, but if they are still communicating to us that that's not workable for them, I don't know how to respond to that positively.
Well, the, I mean, the response is you accept their arguments and rent a separate facility. That's a response. And that's why both would come back. That, them having a separate facility does not obviate the need for a global facility, which we clearly do need. And then in terms of the rental, we are going to run some numbers on building something, but the, you know, the practical matter is, right now, we can't build something in a short period of time to meet these needs.
I understand that.
So we have to enter into some type of lease.
Well, again, so the conversation piece, you know, I, again, I am not privy to your meetings and your tours and everything you've done, and I know you're working on it, okay? I'm not trying to imply that you're not working on it. And I don't know how in-depth those design conversations are about how it could work in a consolidated, you know? So I'm just asking that when it comes back to us, it'd be great if there was some agreement in some way by all the parties so that we can partner with them instead of continuing another negative conversation. That's my request.
Yeah, I don't think we intend it to be negative. I mean, it's two distinct choices. And she believes in one choice, and the management team believes in another choice. And I don't think that's going to be-
But again, if it makes sense, I don't know how she's being presented with, you know, the options. So, you know, y'all continue to do your work. I'm just, you know, when it comes to us, it'd be great if it, if there was agreement.
Fully, we fully agree. But I don't think that's going to be the reality.
Thank you. Let's continue. Commissioner Arrington, followed by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman.
Yeah, I've spoken with the district attorney, and she's adamant that she have her own independent facility, just to briefly touch on that. I understand we do have a new public defender, and I don't know what talks we may or may not have had with him about increases in his or his funding requests going forward. So I'd ask us to be mindful to the extent that we're adding another $4 or $5 million to a prosecution budget, that we need to make sure that we reserve some type of funding for the defender's office. And so that, I mean, that's really my main thing. I'm glad to see the increase in funding for contracts for services and so, but public defenders, we need to maybe put a line item in there and maybe anticipate some type of incremental increase along with the, to correspond with the DA's increased resources.
Yes, sir, and we do have lunch with him next Friday. Alton's also been doing some work with them on some of the challenges that they have for recruiting under ORCA. So we do believe that either both creative approaches, going to some of the bigger law firms and asking for loaned executives as an example, and/or some kind of incremental funding. But I think your point's well taken, and we're working down that path.
Yeah, and especially also with the, you know, increase for part-time judges. We've got more judges.
Yes, sir.
More money for DA's. We've got to think about the defense as well.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Abdur-Raqman?
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to reiterate this, reiterate this sentiments of Commissioner Housman as well as Commissioner Arrington. I think when we're dealing with constitutional officers, and the constitutional officers tell us what their needs are, I think that that should be put forward. And County Manager Dick, I know that you are trying to find the best solution. I know that you are. And so this is not a jab at you. This is just based on the large amount of phone calls and emails and information that I get across the county. It gives the appearance, Commissioner Housman, that it's adversarial, and it's not. But I also need the public to know that if a constitutional officer presents something and reaches out to the commissioners and have a conversation with the commissioners, then there is a need. And so I would really ask that it be presented to us, not only the need, but a exerted effort that we are going down the right road. And the reason that I want to go on record saying this, we're looking at the jail and we're throwing money away. The reality is, is that it's a Band-Aid solution, and I know that individuals say, well, it may be an issue of liability, it may be other issues, and this is why she is adamant about what she needs. But I have to give her the respect due of being the constitutional officer of knowing what she needs. And so I really would like to see, not saying that it's not a concerted effort, the appearance that I'm getting and what I am relaying to constituents across the county is there is a recommendation from the county manager's office, but it does not preclude what she has asked for. And so I'm going on record to let people know that, because what's happening is coming across as very adversarial, and it's not. And I just want people to know that the constitutional officer has made a request, the county manager has given the recommendation. Now, where we land as a happy medium, I hope that we will do something that will not only benefit the ultimate stakeholders, which are the taxpayers, but keep us from any liability down the road. I do want to ask this as far as the parity with the actual marshals and the, I'm sorry, the actual magistrate courts. Does that $200,000, does it reflect the parity? Is that reflection, is that included in that, county manager or CFO?
The magistrate court is for increasing pay for their part-time judges.
Okay, all right, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, you know, certainly, I think that, yeah, you're, when it comes to, you know, kind of constitutional officers, you know, we do, part of our role is to hear the requests, you know, they also need to come with very sound, logical arguments, and just because they don't make the ask doesn't mean that it's a decision that we should move forward with. You know, part of our role is to consider all those alternatives, listen to it, and if it's not well-sounded, we don't think that, or the timing's not right for it, or there are other alternatives, sometimes that, you know, we do have to make decisions that may be counter to, you know, maybe the perceived preferred route of a constitutional officer. And that's just the nature of the way that, way things work, and will always work. So, you know, that's a, I think the piece of it for all of us is, you know, it's logic, well, you know, well-thought-out, you know, not, you know, just throwing something out and saying, I didn't get my way, and, you know, therefore we're adversarial, and that's not what it's about. So again, we keep that in mind as we go through, you know, these types of decisions. I do think, you know, I do have some concern about, you know, kind of in the elections arena around some of the, we spent a lot of money on equipment last year, so I don't really know kind of what that for is about. And then after looking at the last audit we received on purchasing and contracting and that sort of stuff, does give me a little bit of pause. I, I think that, you know, given some of the responses we got back from Chair of the Arts Council, we need to carefully think through, you know, any additional funding on the contract for services for the arts, particularly consideration of that right now, based upon, you know, some of the unintended consequences of potentially doing that. And, you know, kind of the pieces that are on here that are specific sort of facility-related, I mean, look, I think you all probably do a pretty good job of vetting through the personnel stuff and that, bringing that back to us in terms of soundings, but some of the stuff that's on here that's facility-related, I don't really have a sense of kind of, you know, the need for that, what's entailed, et cetera. So, and I sort of followed you, Anna, on the, I think you spoke to this, or whoever spoke to on the salary survey, but I'm not really sure I'm following kind of what we, what we did there. I thought we approved something earlier in the year with a contract on moving forward with that. And then I'm confused as to why we got two tranches of this going forward.
Commissioner Ellis, on the salary survey piece, the board did approve the consulting contract. I believe that Mr. Herman had previously explained to the board that we would conduct the salary survey in two phases. The first phase would be to address the concerns that were originally raised during, I guess, January during budget discussions around the salaries for elected officials. And so there is some work that is being done as part of that salary survey to determine what the compensation model should be for elected officials outside of what their statutory salaries, how their statutory salaries are determined, where they are determined statutorily. So this, this item is the funding that would be needed to implement the recommendations from the salary survey for the elected officials and the department heads, should the board choose to enact those recommendations. I believe that Mr. Herman and the consultants are working towards bringing those recommendations to the board at, in the mid-September timeframe.
Okay, so these are not, this isn't a cost of study, this is a cost associated with implementation of a portion thereof?
Implementation of the first phase, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I mean, the likelihood of that being before us, before the end of this year? I mean, we're in, what are we in right now? We're in August. And then why would that be point two? If the full year impact is point five, I guess, you know, why would we, you know, some of this, would we, should that be considered this year, or should it be for consideration for the following year?
That's an excellent question, Commissioner Ellis. I think that the board could choose to do it either way. We were trying to really just put a placeholder out there. The survey results are not finalized yet, so I'm not certain what the full impact would be, or whether the board would choose to make the effective date this year or at the beginning of next year as part of the 2022 budget. We just didn't want to not include it, should the board decide to implement it and make it effective this year.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Abdur-Raqman?
Just for clarification, County Manager, because I remember the last, the last board meeting and a comment that you made in regards to the separation of the facilities. You stated that you were looking for board direction. What I got from you, that it wouldn't be an issue not to do separate facilities, is just in your opinion, that your recommendation was a better recommendation, but that it would not be an issue. The reason I'm asking for clarification, I never want us to give the opinion as a body that somebody is just shaking a rattle and asking for something for attention. And I think we have to be very careful in what we're saying or portraying to the public. I believe in my experience with the DA that she has had a conversation with me and explained to me why she feels that is the best recommendation. But I just want to go on record, understanding from your office, is it a bad recommendation? Is it an alternate recommendation? Because I just want to make sure for the public that we'll not hear again setting an adversarial tone or giving misinformation, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I think it's an alternative, not a bad recommendation. And I think none of us, which I think was in the last conversation, can really judge what she believes the risk to be. What we're saying is we believe that we could build out the facility that's consolidated to mitigate risk, but I do think she has a legitimate point of view as the holder of that risk to describe what those risks are. And I think, as Commissioner Arrington said, she's pretty clear in, from her perspective. So it is an alternative, not an unacceptable one.
Thank you. That's, that's basically what I needed from you, because here again, as someone who is trying to look at both sides of the coin, but what I don't want the perception to be is that you all have a staunch position that you are holding to as though her position is incorrect, and she just wants it because she wants it, because that's not the perception that I have gotten. It's just an alternative that she thinks as a constitutional officer may be the best. And so I just wanted to clarify that, because my position is one of trying to find a happy medium, but I don't want what it potentially in the community to be portrayed as a us versus them, as opposed to working with a constitutional officer to try to see what's best for the county. So thank you for clearing that up, clarifying that up for me. Thank you.
Ms. Whitmore, anything else?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I did have one last slide, which is the same list of requests, and then it just, it shows you what the impact would be on our fund balance reserve in 2022, based on the two scenarios that we showed you, the multi-year view with a millage rate rollback in 2022 versus if you maintained a 9.33. versus if you maintained, um, a 9.33, um, millage rate. Um, other than that, I had, uh, no other information except to, um, inform the Board that as an appendix to the presentation, we did share with you the projection by department, so you could see, um, each department's projected, um, their, their budgeted expenditures and their projected expenditures through the end of the year.
All right, questions? All right, Mr. Manager.
Um, I think we had programmed in a break, but I'm not sure, since we've moved through this pretty rapidly, that that's necessary. Keep going, Mr. Chairman.
All right, continue.
Keep going. Um, I think what we've done, if you'll go, yes, to that chart, what we've done, and I'm going to ask Alton Adams to help, uh, lead you on this one, uh, this discussion, is what we've tried to do is tee up questions in these three areas that we talked about, uh, at the outset, criminal justice, elections, um, and then lastly, on transportation and transit. So, again, what we're looking for is not a vote, but rather a sense of the group in terms of your view that will help in terms of planning, resource allocation, and options that we would, that we would bring back. So, Alton, let me ask you to help facilitate this first one.
Okay, great, thank you, County Manager. Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, if, if I can, if you'll allow me, I'd like to start with the last question first, because that's the one that I think we'll be able to get through, uh, quickly, and that's the question about, uh, is it time to begin planning for a new jail? And, uh, we have had a number of conversations, and, uh, and at the, and in the last meeting at Commissioner Arrington, I think the message was, "Let's get on with it, and let's get on with it fast," and, um, and so, the, the process would be, we would put out an RFI slash RFP for firms to come in and conduct a feasibility study. Uh, we would go through the, that's typically a 30-to-40-day process. We would have them come and make presentations, and then we would come back to the Board with a recommendation and a firm to do that feasibility study. Based on the timing and how long it takes, that would probably be something we'd come back to you with. Probably best case would be, uh, December, or maybe, uh, the first meeting in January with a recommendation on a specific firm. As I mentioned in the last meeting, the scope of that would include, um, you know, sizing the, the types of services, site devaluation, a preliminary design in terms of what it might look like, and, uh, and a range of other things that would typically, we'd come back to you and say, "We recommend that, uh, the, you know, that, that we, we choose this firm to conduct this analysis based on their bona fides, based on their, on their proposal," and then we'd go ahead and actually do the, uh, do the, the, the evaluation, uh, or the feasibility study. So, I, I guess that the first question I'd like to do is, or oppose to you is, does that, uh, is that something we would like to move forward with, and if so, uh, we would be prepared to start working on, on bringing that, uh, that particular proposal back to the Board in terms of moving forward with the RFI/RFP. And just for, just as a point of information, um, we are, uh, as of yesterday, we are, uh, above 3,000 individuals in our jail for the first time in quite some time. Um, as you may be aware, last year, when we made the effort to reduce the population when COVID first hit, uh, based on CDC guidelines, we got down to about 2,400, a little over 2,400 individuals. So, we've seen a dramatic increase, and, uh, and then based on, on the continued kind of additions and what we have going on with crime, I expect that we'll see, continue to see an uptick on that until the actual backlog reduction efforts start to take hold at the, uh, in the beginning of next year. So, just to give you a little bit of context in terms of, of where we are, and, uh, even with the, the, the current bump, uh, we are at a steady state, obviously, that exceeds the operational capacity of our jail, and we've been that way for quite some time.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis and Commissioner Abdu-Rakman.
I guess, question, and I went here for the discussion on the, uh, jail, the last meetings, I don't have a lot of context for that, but the question in terms of, what percentage capacity are courts operating at right now?
At, it's a complex question. I guess that, that, if you take it in pieces, in terms of first appearances, we're operating at 100%, because we went virtue at first appearances, uh, the requirements in terms of first appearances. In terms of, uh, State Court, Superior Court, uh, and, 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 you know, jury trials and the like, if I had to, to make a guess, it's probably between 20 and 30%.
Okay.
At the high end. Juvenile court is a lot higher because they've continued to operate through the, uh, through the process.
And that 20 to 30% right now is higher, higher than what it was last year?
That's correct, because, yeah, so with, with the exception of first appearances, we, we went to a total halt. Now, we are, we have, we have restarted cer- certain, uh, jury trials, bench trials, and the like that we weren't having a year ago.
Yeah, I mean, I, I sort of generally, a little bit of contrarian view that I, I don't know that it's time for us to begin planning for a new jail because of the context we're in right now is not, is not a permanent situation. If it is, then we, you know, we got a whole different set of issues. Maybe our court's going to operate at 20%. And also, you, when it comes to jail capacity, you know, one could also make the argument that we have plenty of jail capacity within the county. It just, you know, happens to be one facility that's largely unutilized, and that if that were added into the mix, you know, the capacity issues would be addressed, and if courts were fully operational, you could get back to, with those elements, you get back to a sense of something that was very manageable. You know, we've got three jail facilities that we have access to right now, obviously, the main one and the, one in Union City and the one in Alpharetta, which we're not utilizing. Um, so we've got two, you know, jail facilities, which are largely under, underutilized. Obviously, one has a significant amount of capacity and one doesn't. Yeah, okay, but two that are, you know, that are obviously very viable. Um, so, I mean, I, I think that, I, I do think it's potentially not the time to do a feasibility study per se, you know, and, and I think Commissioner Houseman made the remark that, you know, you know, what, is there an appetite? And I, obviously, I guess we approved some group that's going to be working with, uh, there's some jail committee that's working, working group on that, that we approved, members to go on to at the last meeting.
That's with the City of Atlanta, uh, and their, and their, um, council, that's correct.
Right. Um, you know, so until, to me, and that question is closed out, I, I don't know that doing a feasibility study or embarking upon a feasibility study really makes sense. I mean, that's just my own view, uh, that may be a contrarian view, but it's my own view.
If, if I can, a couple of thoughts, Commissioner Ellis. One is, um, I, I think there's a difference between capacity and, and the right capacity. Um, the, 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 the science around incarceration has changed dramatically in the last 40 years, and, and, and we have a facility that was designed to house people for months at a time and then had them, you know, either get acquitted or move on to a, to a, to a, to another facility. Um, when that facility was designed, it wasn't designed with the fact that we have 30% of our population who require some type of, um, medication for, for mental illnesses. It wasn't designed to allow for the appropriate, um, uh, treatment of, of that population in the, uh, if you had an epidemic. Um, it, it, it wasn't designed to appropriately take into account some of the technology things that re, that actually require fewer deputies, and so while, and, and, and on top of that, the physical plant is just sorely in need of, of, of replacement. It's just, it's a, at some point, we're going to have to replace it, so it's just really a question of when. And so, not only is it a question of pure number of beds or cells, it's also a question of the appropriateness of the facility to address the current demographic and needs of the prison population. And one could argue that those two are very much, very much out of sync, and that even with the Atlanta City Detention Center, which I personally have a concern about how you'd split your population amongst two facilities, but that's a different issue, but even with the ACDC, I think you could argue that that's not designed to address some of the concerns that we have around dealing with the population, and unfortunately, not only because of COVID, but we have seen longer and longer stays in our jail for a whole lot of reasons, and so, um, I'm not saying necessarily that, I'm not, not discounting your, your, your comments about overall capacity, what I'm saying is that there's some other considerations. The other thing I would say is that the lead time on a new jail, if we were to start the, the feasibility study in January, it would probably take five or six years, to even before you would break ground. And so, it's not as if we're saying, "We're going to start, we need to fund this thing in, in June of 2022." It really is, six years from now, if you decided, holy smokes, we need to get, we need to replace it, have we done the spade work, so to speak, to be able to get there?
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's an issue of just sort of timing, you know, in terms of who you're engaging and sort of the terms in which you're engaging them on. I mean, I acknowledge a lot of your stuff, but then there's stuff that we've sat on our hands with, you know, like we, we put in money for a feasibility study to do a, uh, stabilization facility, you know, for mental health, and, you know, up until now, we hadn't done a darn thing with it. You know, we sat on it for two years, you know, I mean, cause and effect, right, stuff you're talking about. I mean, we got a whole pot over there, people living in single cells that are, you know, not fit to stay in trial in our competency restoration project.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, you know, so, um, you know, there are other elements to it.
That's correct.
You know, that, that we've not actually done the spade work on as well, right, which could have an impact on this, and, um, so I guess it's, you know, engaging in that, to me, it's kind of like, okay, who are we engaging and what are they really evaluating? And is it a holistic evaluation, or is it really just about, you know, pathway to some one big, large facility, which ultimately is probably going to have to be bonded, right, and there may not be any public appetite for it, particularly with, you know, you may not like multiple separate facilities, but, you know, if there is a, you know, how many beds are in this place over here, Atlanta Detention Center?
Yep.
If there are 1,300 beds, that are sitting empty and not utilized, and it's a functional facility, you know, a lot of our citizenry, citizenry is going to say, "Why, why can't y'all figure out a way to work that through?" versus embarking on a path of a, you know, whole new facility at 500 million, or whatever it is it costs, right? You know, uh, as opposed to other pieces of a feasibility study, of wraparound things that may need to be done in terms of, at, at that existing facility, you know, other services, et cetera, so...
And Commissioners, I think that's, you raise a good point. I mean, the, the feasibility study could include looking at other options, including what would, what would our approach be if we had access to the Atlanta City Detention Center as well as Rice Street? In other words, what would we do, what would it cost, what would we have to invest, et cetera, et cetera. So, it would necessarily preclude that as a potential option as part of that analysis.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, and I'm not certainly suggesting, I'm not suggesting we certainly sit on our hands, and I think everybody's generally, directionally, and, you know, knows that we need to do something, right? You know, and is very frustrated with certain elements of this, um, and other municipal partners that don't want to engage in the conversation with us. Um, you know, so, anyway, I guess that, when we're, if we're going to bring that forward, that feasibility study, you know, really the scope of it, I think, is, um, particularly important. And there probably going to need to be some stuff where it's staged things along the way, because we got, you know, we have an, we have issues now, um, that we need to seek to solve for well before 10 years down the road.
Yep.
So...
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Abdu-Rakman, followed by Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, with all due respect, Commissioner Ellis, I think the conversation should move past to the point that we do need a new jail. Um, I liken this to not to be crass. I remember when I had a Nokia phone, and I was determined not to get another phone, and I kept that phone because I only needed to talk on it. I need, I didn't need any apps on it, I didn't need to text on it, I didn't need to check my email. All I needed to do was talk on the phone, and I had that phone until my carrier sent me a check and said, "Listen, your phone will no longer work on our network. We're going to pay you to upgrade to another phone." And so, I use this analogy for the jail that we have, Mr. Adams. We have outlived the usefulness of that jail. We've outlived it for the safety of our employees. We have outused it, out, 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 uh, lived it for the practicality of the care of our inmates, and so I know that it's always hard to make a decision for a new jail and the stakeholders and what need to be done, but I would employ my colleagues, if you look, and I've looked at the amount of money that we've spent on the jail, and it's a rabbit hole. It's money that's going in and being wasted. And I know that here again, Commissioner Houseman, I've explained to her, we've had the conversation, you're talking about Band-Aid solutions to open heart surgery, and so I know it's a hard conversation. Um, I, uh, contrary, I do think there's public sentiment at this point to be on our side, but more importantly, when you're talking about 2021 going into 2022, and the amount of time that it would take to do this process, we should be doing this process now. In fact, I would venture to say that we are behind in this process. My office is still waiting on information that I requested in March, you know, regarding property that the county owns, you know, that we could possibly use. Um, I think if we're talking about being fiscally, uh, responsible, we've got to stop throwing away money for a bleeding jail, and what I mean in that aspect is we're throwing away taxpayers' money on something that's antiquated, something that does not serve the purposes of what we have and what we're dealing with in 2021, uh, a stone's throw from 2022 shortly, and I know either decision we make would be one that we will not take lightly, but if we look at where we are and what we're spending, we do a disservice to the taxpayers, we, when we continue to spend money with a jail that is not functional, uh, in today's reality of what we should be doing for our inmate population, for what we should be doing for the safety of our, uh, staff, and so I would say, let's move the conversation as painful as it may be, as painful as it was for me to go to another phone and learn how to use a smartphone. It was painful. In the long run, it helped me because it educated me to be able to communicate better. And so, what I would say, in a spirit of, of, uh, us having to have the hard conversations and having to do what we need to do, we need the feasibility study, we need to move past this, uh, hump, so to speak, in the road of whether we need a jail or not. We need a jail. The reality of it, we need one, so whatever we need to do, we should move forward in that spirit of not only saving the taxpayers' money, but we also need to understand the model of which that jail was built under is antiquated. It no longer services the best interest of our society, and we need to move forward.
Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think we definitely, uh, need a new jail. Um, not sure how many of us have been over there and visited the jail, uh, and seen the condition that it is in, um, and so I invite you to take a visit over there, and, and, and see. And so I invite you to take a visit over there and see the condition. There are no cameras. I mean, there are some cameras, but not to the level that is needed. You know, there should be cameras watching any and everything virtually at all times. And, you know, the cameras that are there are 20, 30 years old compared to the technology that's out today. But I see our sheriff has joined us, so I'd like to invite him down to have him speak about this, because we could pontificate all day. But the person who is charged by the Constitution with the upkeep and maintenance of that facility and the control of that facility is here, so I'd love to hear from him. Sheriff Labatt.
Do I need to hit anything in particular? It's on. First of all, thank you. And I was upstairs, so what, as my mother would say, what a coinkydink, all right? We are celebrating, and if you would like, I can bring down the Cobb County Chief, Chief of, or Chief Deputy, the Henry County Chief Deputy, Douglas County Chief Deputy, Forsyth County Chief Deputy, because we are in the midst of figuring out how we work on items like this together. And so if, if I may, if it's appropriate, I, I'm here certainly to support the feasibility study. It is beyond time, all right? But I thought, and if there was a question that was posed before I got here, I'd like to know what that question is. I don't want to be at a disadvantage, but I'll tell you what I was told. Yeah, we're behind time. We're behind time. I couldn't put it more exact and more efficiently than, than Madam Kadesha, my Commissioner, from the Fighting Sixth, right? I say that because as, if you were not impassioned or embodied by that, then you're in the wrong business, right? I heard there was some question as to the utilization of our current resources, right? Absolutely the most ignorant statement ever made. Let me tell you what I did when Chairman Pitts, last time I was here, or we, I visited via Zoom, and thank you for allowing me to participate. The assertion was made that there was 500 empty beds. And so to clarify that, and we've talked since then, and I appreciate that, I personally shut down the jail immediately, brought in every resource we had, and counted every empty bed in the facility. And because of the way we classify individuals, it's not 500, it's 300, with 30 beds out of operation, all right? 30 beds at a time. And so here's the most unique part about this, because what I do is run jail facilities. And to be accredited, to have your American Correctional Association accreditation and any other accreditation that comes along with being a sheriff, running a jail, running a prison, you actually have to have 10% of your bed space available for emergent needs. I have constantly said, as we approached this year, that I expect our population to rise. It has done just that. Woke up yesterday morning, we were at 3,030 individuals. So the assertion that there is a jail in Alpharetta that we are not utilizing is absolutely absurd. Have you been there lately? It has been shuttered for the last year and a half, going on almost two years. It is absolutely deplorable. But as I stand in this newly crafted area that was spent $3, $4 million on refurbishing that we don't use every single day, I had the very same conversation when, when my friend Arthur Blank spent $2 billion on a dome. That's not used every single day. There was a need, there was a need here to refurbish this Assembly Hall, but a facility that we overuse every single day with thousands of toilets, two showers, for hundreds of inmates at a time. For anyone to think that over the past 20, 30, 40 years that we've done a good job, we've absolutely have not. If we don't do this feasibility study, we will put us back 10, 12 years. We need to figure out the best path forward, and the only way we do that is with you all's help. And so I, I support not just the feasibility study, and I appreciate Alton Adams. And let me, let me give you a position of where I, I used to sit and where I am. So I used to watch the commission meetings for two years as chief of the city jail, and certainly the last year as a candidate. And I would always say, why is Alton Adams up there having this conversation about the jail? Where is the sheriff? Well, I'm right here. I'm right here if you got a question, I'm right here if you want to come visit. That's the first thing I did, week one, week two. And I've heard from, from each of you, whether you made it or not, but we need to get in front of this conversation. We absolutely need to. We have a responsibility to treat the least of these, right? Regardless of what they're charged with. I got it. I don't have the luxury of being a Republican or a Democrat when it comes to being the sheriff. I don't get to make a choice that says, well, we're not going to house you humanely because you're a Republican, or we're not going to house you humanely because you're a Democrat. It is quite simply, it is past time to build a new facility. It is past time for us to treat and be in a space that we can treat each other better. I mean, I, I look around, I love this new facility, right? I'm not sure how old it is, right? I'm at a slight disadvantage, but I promise you, it is not used by hundreds and hundreds and thousands of people on a daily basis, on a daily basis. Right now, I found this out. See, I'm not just bringing forth information that, I'm just not pontificating. I am bringing you facts right now. And I like Johnson Controls and Jim Nance, and we pay them $300,000 a month just for maintenance. But guess what? We can't even do a proper generator test, which we're supposed to do three or four times a year, period. Because if we cut the power off, it might not come back on. We can't put our people at risk like that. We simply cannot. Every day when I walk in the facility, every Monday, I'm there, and any other time you want to visit, just take a look around. Our people deserve to work in a better environment. When it flooded over here in this top building, one of these offices on the 10th floor over there, because I had an opportunity to come up and visit with a number of you, pre-election and post-election, it got refurbished over there, right? But, but again, and certainly, let me, let me say thank you. If there are any questions, I'm here to answer those questions. But to answer number three specifically, and it might not be an appetite in your community, but it's an appetite, and I've heard this repeatedly, since I came and invited everybody to come fight crime when I was in my vest, and certainly, I'm going to drag you out there, Mr. County Manager, and I certainly appreciate, appreciate the work that you and your team have done since then, right? Look, again, our county manager, we had a generator, we had a bunch of other stuff go down, and our county manager is out there now helping us solve these problems. But a billion dollars later, in 10 years, we could have built two jails. Actually, if we did it at the right time, we would only have to spend $300, $400 million. I'm not saying it's an easy choice, but leadership is difficult. It's hard at best, and I need each one of you, instead of calling me, right? Later on, I need you to make a decision right now that will help us propel the county forward. And so as we get ready to move into this, the answer is absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity, but equally as important is I am here for each one of you all, if there are any questions. When Chairman Pitts and I, I appreciate that. I want you to know, my team now has a better understanding of what my expectations are, because when you asserted that there were 500 empty beds over there, we immediately locked the doors and took the next three hours in making sure that we could provide facts. And so I appreciate that, but I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. I appreciate it, Commissioner Arrington. If there is anything that anybody needs to know, I'm right here. I'm right here, and I want to be of help in this capacity. But certainly, let me, let me, let me tell you, right? And I said this last time, we've done a good job of filling our vacancies, but we have an aged workforce where people are retiring. I am losing lieutenants and captains to the very person that just spoke upstairs, Chief Applin over at APS, because they have a better benefits plan. Now, this is not the conversation around that, but what I'm telling you is, every single facet of your sheriff's office, not my sheriff's office, your sheriff's office, is working diligently every day to make sure that we are where we need to be with respect to Fulton County and becoming the number one sheriff's office in the country. We cannot do it without a new facility. We simply can't. But if there are any questions, I'm here. I'm here. I won't go anywhere until you tell me such time that you don't have any questions. I'm here for the duration, and I certainly, again, I really appreciate, Mr. Chairman, and all the commissions allowing me last week to join via Zoom, so I'm here.
Let's see here. Commissioner, are you done, Commissioner Arrington? Yeah, Commissioner Houseman still hasn't spoken. Commissioner Houseman?
Good to see you, Sheriff.
Good to see you, thank you.
First of all, I think it's time for a feasibility study at a minimum, you know, so I'm not going to argue that point, but I do think it matters what we're talking about doing and how we're going to do it. You know, you and I toured Alpharetta when you first came on duty, and, you know, it's not a hotel by any stretch of the imagination, but I don't know that I would consider it deplorable, and I do think that we should be utilizing it. And if it needs some paint or, you know, some cameras or something, then that's what we need to do, but we need to get that facility open, and I've said it, and I've said it, and I'll continue to say it. We need to keep our officers on the street, not going back and forth downtown from North Fulton unnecessarily. So to me, that's a high priority, and it's a quicker fix than a five-year plan to get a jail. It's something we can do, you know, pretty quickly. So I just really hope that you'll focus on that in the interim, even though it may be a Band-Aid, it will help. I heard a comment about cameras being 20 years old or whatever. I've been here 11, and I remember buying cameras for the jail. I don't know what kind of shape they're in, but I remember doing a security camera upgrade over there since I've been here, so. But if they're not adequate, because if we're talking five years, then bring that to us. I mean, we need to deal with these things because you do need the resources to do your job, and I think you've got agreement up here that we recognize that. I don't think anybody's saying that. But then we've got this issue of the study we did a couple of years ago, that Commissioner Ellis mentioned, of the Behavior Health Stabilization Center, that, you know, we've done virtually nothing on. And I don't know how that factors into what your needs are. It seems like they would be going hand in hand with each other if we had that, that would alleviate some of which you've got in the jail currently, if we had a different facility for those folks that do have the behavior health problems. So I'd like to see us revisit that, and, you know, again, that's something that ought to be considered with COVID relief money. It certainly has been identified as a big issue we're going to face with behavior health problems associated with COVID. So there might be a way to get that off the ground using some of the money that we've gotten from the feds. We want to work with you, I hope you know that.
I do, and if I'm, you gave me a lot to unpack. So let me start with the facility, and I certainly appreciate you taking the opportunity to come and, and visit and tour Alpharetta. Alpharetta is in need of some more Band-Aids, right? But we are also in need of processes, right? One of the things that the chief and I have been working on is how do we transfer detainees as opposed to become and open up a secondary site for misdemeanors, right? I'm not into running a municipal facility, right? We've had, had that tough conversation. So we are working on, on that piece. The portion about, I'll go directly to the mental health piece, but let me go to the cameras first. I do want to, again, look, I'm completely transparent. We just completed a $4.5 million project in terms of you all passed the project, and we are working with administration to upgrade the cameras. So we've not gotten there yet, that is our plan. Again, still part of a Band-Aid of having a newer facility, but I certainly appreciate the commission's support in making those things happen. So that was early on, and our CIO for the county and his team and the management team have stepped in and done a great job there. So I'm, I'm excited about that project. We'll be able to do some things that'll bring us at least to, if not cutting-edge technology, at least to where we need to be from that perspective. The mental health unit, and since you brought that up, has been under a lot of scrutiny over the last seven months, because the company that we are doing medical care with has failed us. And so maybe our county attorney at some point can opine on that, but she and her team have been working diligently to make sure we are being made whole. And so as we have been able to, with, with their county attorney and her team have been able to ward off several different lawsuits, we are at a pivotal place with Navcare in particular, and they have done things that certainly will move us in a space that will do better for our mental health population. But even to be more specific, most, if not all, and I'd say 85 to 90% of the funds budgeted for that mental health unit were solely to go to, and the services to be provided to the women's facility in the South Annex. And so we have done some extraordinary things in the last seven months about being able to provide services, and that leadership has come from your office, Madam County Attorney, and I certainly appreciate, first, our newest judge, Ashley Palmer, right? And certainly Amelia Joyner, who has stepped in to really do yeoman's work and help us. She's trained, she's continued to put us in a space that we are better educated about what we need to do from a mental health perspective, from a lawyer's perspective, but also moving into being able to serve those clients even better. And so, again, to your point, right? And we've been working with our county manager and his team and Alton with respect to really leaning in toward technology that will allow us to do everything, to include, and I'm going back to Alpharetta, booking in people in Alpharetta, allowing them in that facility to be able to have services there as well, including making bond from Alpharetta. So there are a lot of things that we can do better, and, but, but rest assured, we have that conversation and we are, we have action plans in place as we get ready to move forward. So that's just a little history with respect to the mental health piece. We've brought in new staff, new chaplains, to really, really counteract some of the assertions that have been taking place with respect to mental health that will not solve our mental health problem. As you know, it is much larger than any of us here, but we are actively and aggressively pursuing that.
Well, thank you for that, and I don't know what percentage of folks that are over on Rice Street have mental health issues or at Union City for that matter, but I think we all recognize that there's really nowhere else for them to go but jail, and so they're in and out of the jail, and it's a real problem, and we shouldn't be in that business.
I agree.
Okay?
Absolutely.
So I think we all agree with that, but we still have to deal with it.
I agree.
And I see them, you know, living under bridges, and they're either, you know, coming in and out of our jail or on the streets, and it's just really heartbreaking and dangerous, quite dangerous. We saw a fire this week under a bridge. I don't know that they said that that's what caused it, but, you know, some of the evidence looks, points in that direction, and, you know, I see them underneath the Cortlandt Street Bridge. What a, you know, recipe for disaster that is. So, you know, we've got to deal with this. I think we all recognize we have to deal with it. And you keep mentioning humanely dealing with it, and I just fundamentally don't think having them in jail is humanely dealing with them. We've got to have a separate facility for that. And, you know, again, I just hope that that's part of this conversation, whether it's next door, down the street, at Atlanta City Jail, you know, whatever we come up with, it's got to be the priority, because we do have to deal with these people in a humane way and try and help them, get them the assistance they need. They stay in jail, they might be on meds, they get on the street, they don't take the meds, they get back in jail, you know?
I agree, I agree, and, but it is important for us to note, all right? At the Fulton County level, 95% of the people in jail are charged with heinous crimes. And so I don't want to get ahead of the courts, all right? We are working with the courts, especially in a mental health capacity. We are working with the courts, especially in a mental health capacity, to make sure Madam DA and her team can charge people accordingly. I am very, very passionate about how we attack this mental health conversation together. And so, anything that we can do better, we certainly want to be able to do that to include, right? I had our team yesterday take a look at those. We are the biggest service recipient of Georgia Regional there is in the country. So, we had over 70 or 80 people charged with different crimes, everything from aggravated assault to murder, that are at Georgia Regional trying to receive services. As you know, we've partnered with Emory University to make sure we have competency building so people can actually be charged. We actually have people in jail that have been there since 2015, charged with murder because they're not competent enough to stand trial. And so, we are doing, we are working very feverishly. I agree with you. The more services we can provide, we certainly can get at least people off the floor, get people in that environment helped.
Well, we could talk about this all day.
Amen.
I know we could, but I think it would help us, especially as we get questions from the public, to, you know, really have an assessment on a regular basis from you of what the current situation is.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we have individual conversations, but that's not the same as, you know, getting some report, if you will, on a regular basis, so we all are on the same page. We know what's happening, we know what's not happening, we know where the shortcomings may be or what you think's going to happen. So, if you could consider doing that, I think that would be very helpful during this whole process as we figure out where we're going to go in the future. But I think you've got agreement up here that it's a problem that has to be solved.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We'll be more than happy to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, it's 12:11 now. I thought we were going to stop at noon. We've got a lot more to go on the agenda, but there's a... We're going to lose a quorum, and also there's a pension board meeting, I believe, at 1:30, Mr. Manager, here.
Yes, sir. That's true.
Okay, so, we've got to move forward, but if you can keep your comments and questions to a minimum, that would be very helpful as getting through the agenda. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman.
Chairman, I'll be quick. Sheriff, since we do have you here, and for the sake of those that may not understand how the condition of our jail hampers your ability to not only keep seasoned employees, but to attract good candidates, I was at one of the job fairs at the South Annex and was able to have a conversation with a couple of people that applied not only to the Sheriff's Department and applied to APD, and they were very candid with me, saying that they applied to you, but they didn't even... They were like, "I don't really want the job. I need it, but I just want you to quickly speak to how that impedes you. I know you've got a seasoned staff that's going to be retiring, but the condition of the jail, how does it play into us retracting... Excuse me, attracting and retaining staff?"
I think you hit the nail right on the head. I've been told personally at those job fairs as well as in the public, "I'd love to come work for you, not... Don't want to work at 901 Rice Street." No one works... Wants to work at 901 Rice Street. In fact, when we moved detention officers from Grady Hospital and replaced them with deputies, because we need armed individuals there, we had a slew of resignations, right? And we used to tell people that all roads led to 901 Rice Street. Now, it's the exact opposite. We're focusing on simultaneously recruiting so that we can fight crime and do a good job of protecting our courts as well as transporting and law enforcement, all the things that come along with that. But you are absolutely right. It affects our retention as well as our recruitment efforts to have such a facility that is in such disrepair.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the sheriff? All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We started with number three. If you could just answer the question one and two briefly, sir, from your perspective.
Do you see the question?
Yeah, I can see it. Thank you. Thank you. What role is Fulton County playing in addressing this street crime? Look, I said this and I meant this, right, and not just an election platform, the Fulton County Sheriff's Office will become the number one full-service law enforcement agency in the state. So, immediately following the terrible incident, even at Piedmont Park, we patrolled this particular weekend. It goes back to the root of what we were just discussing. We are recruiting for both, and so where there are opportunities for us to be on patrol, you've heard about our Scorpion Team and what we've been able to do, and along with that, Commissioner Housman, in terms of reporting, I would love to really keep you all abreast of what we're doing, even from the law enforcement side. We've already taken off the streets two AR-15s, right, in conjunction with Georgia State Patrol and Atlanta Police Department. We run four different details. We've had 32 different operations of our own that we are approaching crime fighting differently in and throughout Fulton County. I have said to each one of you all in some capacity that we are going to attack street racing. We're going to attack these ATVs, anyone that means us harm in Fulton County. We absolutely... That's the role we play. We are the chief law enforcement agent in the state, not just Fulton County, in the state, and we are going to act as such. And so, where we have the capacity to, just last week, take some human traffickers off the street, over off FIB, mind you, in that same corridor as the Fulton County Police Department, we're taking criminals off the street, and that's what our focus will be and will remain when it comes to just fighting crime and those things throughout the county. We've partnered with on more than one occasion, police chiefs in and throughout. We have 1,300 warrants. That also means we have 1,300 potential victims, and so we're going after bad guys, and we're going to create a safer Fulton County. Should the county supplement cities with police support, I would suggest to you that the county should really engage with the sheriff's office and let us do our job, and our job is fighting crime. So, there are three or four pillars that go along with this, certainly running and protecting the courts and the county jail, but that third leg is to be the chief law enforcement in the county. So, as much support as we can get surrounding that, you'll see a change from that perspective. We'll let... I would say let the cities be the cities, and then we will... Our job is to work in conjunction with the resources we have, even swearing them in, swearing in different police departments and specialized units so we can work together to affect crime. Thank you.
All right. Any questions and other questions for the sheriff? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any comments on one or two?
Well, I have a bunch of them, but I'll save mine for later.
Well, yeah, certainly. I mean, I agree. The question is with police support. I don't know that based on the size of our police department that our police could support the cities, but I think certainly our sheriff could, but I'm open to our police and/or our sheriffs being involved with helping our cities, particularly given where we are right now with all the crime that is going on. I do think that right now, I don't know if there's an appetite for a new jail, but I think... I doubt anyone would push back on a new jail at this time with all the crime that we're seeing in our cities and in our county. And I think, you know, we need to, I guess, one and two kind of go hand in hand. We need to work with our cities in order to help address the increase in crime. So, I think we should... We have a role, and we need to allocate whatever resources are necessary because crime is completely out of hand in Fulton County. Lenox Mall looks like a demilitarized zone. I mean, that's crazy. That... We cannot accept that as the new normal. If there's anything we can do to help supplement our cities and their efforts, we need to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Ellis?
I just say, you know, in terms of how we prioritize our funding, I think the principal means of the funding should go towards the services, you know, which we explicitly do at the sheriff's office that are separate and distinct from the cities. You know, there are... We obviously have a lot of challenges within... With crime throughout this county, and I don't disagree with the notion of supplementing the efforts, you know, where we've got the ability to do so, but I don't, given the amount of different police entities throughout this county, I don't think that we need to become the main policing entity throughout the county. I don't think that's our role. And, you know, if there are deficiencies in certain cities that need to be addressed, ultimately, those cities need to get their act together and get them addressed. You know, we can't be the end solution for that, you know, unless they want us to, you know, write us a check and, you know, set up an IGA where we're going to take over those services. So, I think that that's the piece that I do think, you know, supplementing that and certainly responding when we're in a time of crisis, you know, certainly makes sense, and we should certainly do that, but I think we need to be careful about not basically taking over functions which those local cities' police departments should be doing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Housman?
Yeah, I tend to agree with that, but I also think that if we're losing officers to other police jurisdictions in Fulton County because our pay's not adequate or our benefit packages don't measure up, then that's a big problem. We're spending a lot of money training folks and getting them hired and started and just for them to take that investment that we've made somewhere else. So, and if that leads us to be in a place where they can't do their job and we have to supplement their services, then we're just dog-wagging, you know, chasing its tail. So, that piece, I think, really needs to be evaluated and addressed immediately.
All right. Anything else on one, two, or three? All right.
Next chart. So, the next area is elections. What we tried to do here is tee up just a couple of questions really, and then an end one for any other issues, but one that we don't have clarity from the board on is, would you like for us to begin to resource and fund the entire election's cost, including the municipal share, because that becomes a subject each cycle? And then the second one was, because there is a lot of uncertainty interjected into our elections organization now due to SB 202 and various activities, the question was, are there things that we would be bringing forward that you would see as no regrets steps regardless of how those processes play out? We've teed up three here. The establishment of Election Central, which is, again, the primary need driving the warehouse. A business process consultant, which we do have responses to an RFP that would help with particularly the absentee process itself, and then the staffing model, which came up in the last election. So, Mr. Chairman, those are the questions for this area.
Okay. Well, I'll use my one minute here today. My answer to number one is an absolute yes, but I also believe there's some state legislation that would need to be changed for us to do it, but I think the taxpayers pay for elections, and we ought to... That's our responsibility, and we ought to pay for all of them. That's my comment. Commissioner Housman, followed by Commissioner Arrington.
You're right, Mr. Chairman. I think Georgia law does require that they pay for their elections, and I think the problem that we've got is that there's no consultation with the cities on what they need, and they're just given a bill based on what we say they need. And so, if there was more collaboration there, if they, you know, could say, "Well, we, you know, expect this amount of turnout. We think we need this amount of precincts," and, you know, worked with them instead of ramming it down their throat with a big bill, they'd like it a lot better. But I, you know, I think, I hope you're all aware that, at least on the north side of the county, they're looking at forming an election authority to conduct their own elections, not this cycle, but going forward. So, this is a very timely question, but current Georgia law does require that they pay for their own elections. So, if that could be changed legislatively, then perhaps that's a way to do it, but again, even if we were paying for it 100%, we should be engaging them to make sure that we're providing the service that they need in the way that they would like to see it. These other items, Election Central, absolutely. Trying to follow the bouncing ball this last cycle of, you know, following a ballot from 27 locations before it was counted is just absolutely ridiculous. Glad we're doing the business process consultant. It's long overdue. We should have been doing that, you know, in January. The staffing model, you know how I feel about that. I think we should do that in-house. I think we need to have folks that are dedicated to Fulton County to do that function that's so important. Any other issues? Just, we need some good management over there.
Commissioner Arrington?
My answer for number... My answer for question one is no, and the fact that there is a current law that prevents us from doing it, I mean, I don't even know how we could even anticipate trying to do something outside of the law. So, I guess if the law got changed, I could reconsider that, but then when I think about us, you know, having to rent beds or, you know, even potentially renting beds from... Or paying Alpharetta for use of the jail or paying the City of Atlanta for use of their jail beds, you know, why would we absorb that cost? Or if we did absorb that cost, I would want to see some type of credit back, right? I mean, if we're going to charge them, if we're not going... If we're going to waive our costs or waive their portion of our costs for the election, then they ought to waive, you know, something back for us off of anything that we, you know, any bill that we... Or any monies that we may have to allocate towards them. So, I don't even think it's possible right now. I think question number one goes away because it's against the law. It's not even possible right now. So, the better question is, you know, maybe do we want, as a board, to take a position as to whether we want to change the law? And then, if we decide that that's what we want to do, and again, I'm against that, but if we decide that that's what we want to do and if it gets changed, then we could, you know, maybe there'd be a different answer, but under the law and what we're dealing with now, it's not even a possibility. And Election Central, I think that makes pure point... Makes perfect sense. Business process consultant, I'm sure that the processes that they have over there could be improved. I know that they benefited greatly from having our county manager and his staff wrap around them for the November and January elections, so I certainly would like to see that continue. And the staffing model for future elections, I mean, I don't have any problem with the staffing model, you know, less than 10% of the people that were used came from happy places, and most of the people that they use, the volunteers that they use, are people from the neighborhoods, and a lot of these people that have been doing... That do elections, they work it for multiple years. They look forward to that every year, every two or three years, working those elections, working the polls, and so we have a lot of longtime poll workers that have done great jobs throughout the years, and so I'm fine with the staffing model. You know, as to North Fulton forming, talking about forming their own authority, you know, if that's what they want to do, then that's what they want to do. We all know that there was no fraud in this last election. This is all, in my opinion, this is all, you know, overreaction and being pushed by a Trump agenda, and, you know, I'm not going to have any part of it. I'm going to... I'm, I'm going to stand against, I'm going to firmly stand against, uh, that, that type of effort. Basically what they're saying is, oh, we didn't win this election, it was fraud, and we're going to change all this stuff. They already passed Senate Bill 2, 202, making all these other changes and want to do all of this other stuff so that they can ultimately control the outcome of the election. And I'm, I'm, I'm just not going to partake in any of that. It's, it's, it's hogwash is what it is. But if that's what they want to do, have at it. Have at it. If that's what they want to do. They know there was no fraud, they just lost the election. That's what happened. Guess what? The Democrats lost four years earlier. That's how Trump got in there. They don't go change all the rules. That's what I was talking about the other day. Changing the rules, changing the goalposts. Every time somebody else gets in power, oh, well, we're going to change those rules. Uh-uh, we're not going to let that happen again. Desperate impact. I'm not going to support it at all.
Commissioner Abdur-Rahman?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I, I do believe that when we look at the elections and what we're talking about, if we don't, if we don't talk about the effect of SB 202, then we're not having a serious conversation. Uh, the chairman himself has been on national news talking about the takeover of Fulton County elections. So if we're going to talk about a serious conversation, it has to include that. Uh, Fulton County elections, did we have our problems? Yes. But by far, we resolved those problems, we identified the problems, and we hold and held the best elections by far. And so I think it does a disservice when we allow a narrative to snake its way into what we're doing or what we should be doing. Um, the mayors, I've talked to them, the mayors that I represent and some of the mayors that I don't represent, and they do have a problem when they're having to scramble to see whether they're going to hold the election, whether we're going to hold the election. I think the, to what Commissioner Hausman said, the communication needs to be better. We need to respect the mayors and what their needs are, but we need, and I know I may be the, uh, optimist here, but I still say politics needs to stop coming into something when you lose a race. When you lose a race, you've lost it. And so if you, if you want reform, I'm for, I'm for reform. Um, I try to be fair, I try to look at both sides of the coins, but I would be remiss if I would sit up here and, and, and I'm looking at this staffing model and business process consultant and Elections Central, Fulton County elections, we've done a lot of reform. The county manager has worked with the elections to make sure it was as smooth as it could be, given that it was the pandemic. And so I am for any processes that we need to do to move forward. What I am not for is to continue with a narrative as though Fulton County doesn't know how to hold its elections or Fulton County is ripe for takeover and we should be doing something different because we did something fraudulently. There was no fraud. Uh, can processes be better? Yes. Um, but I would echo what, uh, Commissioner Arrington said. Uh, I went, uh, during the elections to different precincts and some of those people I've been seeing for years. Some of those same people that are working are people in our community. They're retired educators, they're, uh, people who we know on a first-name basis. And so to, to give the impression that we have all these outsiders, uh, working the precincts for some, uh, other agenda, that's a fallacy, that's not true. And so I just want to go on record saying whatever we need to do to be the best that we can for Fulton County, for the stakeholders, for the taxpayers, I am for that, uh, in collaboration with our mayors. We should have a good relationship with our mayors. And sometimes the needs vary, sometimes the needs are the same, but sometimes the needs are politically motivated. And we need to really call a thing what it is. There was no fraud. There was no fraud. Oh, and by the way, there was no fraud. And so I'm here in a spirit to make sure that we move forward, but let's stop, you know, giving this hint as though we didn't do what we were supposed to do for the Elections Department. Yes, we can do better, but we did some great processes. We were, uh, edge cutting, on the cutting edge for a lot of the things that we did, uh, with this last election. And so are there any other issues? Yeah, there are other issues. We allow politics to come in and play at the county level that should have stayed at the state level. And so if we don't look at that and understand that's a reality, and that means that we're just in the maze hopefully trying to get to the cheese. So I would say here again, there was no fraud. Could we do things better? Do we need new leadership? Yeah, at some point we do. But right now, I think if we don't look at the effects of SB 202, understand why SB 202 was in place, understand what we need to do as a county to make sure that none of our voters are disenfranchised, then we're being disingenuous to our public.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah. Um, well, I think really, unfortunately, kind of the, the conversation's sort of gotten away from the main thing. And the main thing when it comes to our elections, really, let's, let's go to this first question. Um, in what some of the mayors have expressed an interest in, I guess, is doing their own elections. They'd only be doing it for the municipal cycle, we'd still be doing it for everything else. So what that implies is they're not necessarily concerned about fraud, they're concerned about, um, just our ineffectiveness and the frustration they've had with dealing with us over an extended period of time, dealing, dealing with our Elections Department over an extended period of time. Uh, so, you know, I liken this to a certain extent where we were with our tax assessment operation a few years back. There's just not a high degree of confidence in this operation, regardless of whether or not one feels like there was or was not any element of fraud in the election. Uh, we've got a long history of snafus and, um, crises and, you know, and, and emergencies that sort of crop up every election cycle. So I think where we're struggling where it really is more a crisis of confidence in our elections operation. And so I, you know, I do agree that we should not necessarily fully fund the, fund the stuff unless it's law and every other county's doing the same thing. I do think we ought to have a, um, a clear means by which the municipalities can identify what their costs are. I think we've got better at that in terms of the stuff that we've, uh, shared, but also, you know, um, they need to have a better sense of kind of like what the service expectation is for those municipal elections as well and how we're going to meet them. Um, in terms of these no-regret steps, I mean, I, you know, we're about funding, I mean, this body to me is about funding elections, we're not about, you know, the actual, the Board of Commissioners should not be about running the elections. Um, and quite frankly, right now, I don't think that, you know, our issues are funding-related when it comes to our elections, they're management-related. And until those are dealt with, whatever we deal, do on these other things, whether that's changing the staffing model, bringing in business process consultants or this Election Central, I think I'm just, I just think we'll continue to have issues. So, um, you know, I'm not, not opposed to bringing in a business process consultant, but I don't think unless it comes also with significant changes within the management construct of our elections that it's going to make, um, the kind of difference it should make.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Hausman?
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Um, you're right, Commissioner Ellis, there, the cities would only, um, try and do their, their municipal elections, not all elections. That, of course, would not comply with Georgia law. And their issue really is collaboration and cost. So that, that's really the problem. Um, and it's been stated a couple of times that, um, the county manager stepped in the last few cycles and helped the Elections Department. And, I mean, honestly, we shouldn't have to step in and help the Elections Department to that level. We shouldn't have to be all hands on deck with every department head lending their expertise to prop up the Elections Department. The Elections Department should be able to handle that on their own. And I hope y'all have taken the time to read the audit that, um, our county auditor just provided us. I mean, it had basic management lacking throughout the, the whole document. No standard operating procedures in place, no job duties for the employees, no purchase orders, no timekeeping of what contractors were doing. So we get million-dollar invoices and there's no backup documentation to even know if that was legitimate or not. Um, missing equipment, missing equipment. We, we're asked to buy equipment all the time and there's no inventory control on the equipment we've invested in. So, I mean, there's a host of problems over there. Dumping more money into it is not the problem, not going to fix the problem. They do need a facility. I know we have to get out of that warehouse that they're currently in. There does need to be a transparent way that, that concerned citizens, rightfully and deservedly so, can observe the process. They can't really do that. We shouldn't be leasing space for that either, every year, like we had to last year. But the bottom line is, the Elections Department should be run independently, managed by their board, with, with a director over there that can do the basics. And that's what's lacking over there, is the basics.
Thank you, Commissioner Hausman. Um, and I'd like to add to that, that, um, Commissioner Hausman, um, you are speaking from the audit that was recently provided to all the commissioners, okay? And, um, I think that that's something that we definitely need to, uh, hear from the Director of the Department of Registrations and Elections. And our chair has said that, uh, he's going to make sure that Mr. Barron does talk to us about that and all those issues that were raised. So, um, we can address that, because we definitely need to. And we do need a facility, we need transparent process, and we do need to ensure that we are confident in the leadership of the Department of Registrations and Elections. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, anything else, other questions? All right, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. The next one, uh, and the last one, uh, is really the discussion that we had over the course of the last couple of years. And it deals with not only transportation, since we, we have a plan for that with T-Splats, but more specifically with transit. So it's two fundamental questions. Should we pursue a funding mechanism for our, uh, transit plan? Because I think that is a yes/no, um, question. And then two, assuming yes, then there are at least, uh, three, and it may be an all-of-the-above approach in terms of funding mechanisms are most favored by this group for us to pursue.
All right, Commissioner Arrington?
Uh, yes, we should pursue a funding mechanism for our transit plan. No, I do not think we need to do a county sales tax referendum. We're already, um, doing T-Splats or talking about doing T-Splats and, and ran into agreement with our cities. Yes, we should consider regional and federal, uh, sources for the funding mechanisms, uh, of the, of our transit plan. And, and, I mean, I guess, there's a, the question's a little misleading because it doesn't mention T-Splats, so it sounds like, you know, what, it, it's like we, oh, we forgot this big old T-Splats thing, right? I mean, like, I don't even know how you do this without talking about T-Splats because T-Splats is helping fund our transit plan.
Um, well, the, the reason to think about it a little bit differently is generally, if we want to pursue federal funding for transit, and we would need to if we're going to do anything of consequence, you've got to have a 30-year funding source. And T-Splats is five-year. So while T-Splats could do minor, let, think about it as, um, bus stop improvements, things like that, but if we're going to do any bus rapid transit lines or alternative, uh, transit lines, you know, step down from that, and we're going to participate with federal funding, then we've got to have some other mechanism that goes well out beyond where a T-Splats would go. That, that's the reason it's differentiated.
I mean, I could maybe consider doing something like that at the end of a T-Splats, right? But I, I don't know that stacking that on top of a T-Splats, um, is palatable for, for taxpayers.
You finished, Commissioner?
Yes, I'm done.
All right, uh, Commissioner Hausman?
Um, well, I, I mean, the way that the, um, legislation was structured that allowed us to do T-Splats was capped at .75 for T-Splats for typical transportation projects with the .2 of that 1% sales tax reserve for potential use for transit at a longer term than the five years that the county manager just outlined. So it's already in place, we're just not utilizing it, we haven't gone to the voters. So if, if we did go to the voters, it would in essence be practically the entire penny would go for transportation, either transit or, um, or, uh, regular T-Splats-type work, bicycle paths, roads, bridges, um, that kind of thing. So, you know, that's, that really is the conversation. We do have to have local match dollars even with the new federal funding package that's being talked about right now, that's hopefully about to actually come to fruition. So that, that's really the question, is where does that local match come from? Um, I don't see on your list here anything about bonding or TFI loans or anything like that. I know that those are some other options that perhaps we could talk about, um, if we didn't want to go the .2, um, to the voters, if we wanted to take a different path. So I, I'd like to see us, um, I mean, I think it's important that we continue to invest in transit. We are going to, you think traffic's bad now? Um, with the 2 million or so people that are projected to move here in the next 10 to 20 years, we're going to be suffocated by traffic. Um, and nothing we're doing today with transportation really is for us, it's for the future. I think we all recognize that. So I think we need to explore all of our options, Mr. Manager, um, whether we get a consultant to help us with that. But, you know, I, I think that there are other options than what is listed here on this page that we should talk about, and we should talk about them with our mayors. If, if in fact we decided that in lieu of the .2 going to the voters, but to do a bond, would they support that effort? Would they, would they help us communicate it to the community that we're all in it together, even if it was a Fulton County initiative? So I just think that's a bigger conversation that we need to have. But, but if we don't have local match, we will not be able to take advantage of the federal funding that is getting ready to be allocated in transit.
All right, Commissioner Abdur-Rahman?
Um, I definitely agree, Commissioner Hausman. Um, we're going to need to do that local match and also, uh, with the federal, uh, infrastructure, uh, we will need to look at that, uh, that light, that light rail. I think if we're talking about moving from a economic point of view, uh, attracting other businesses and also the people that are coming to Georgia regardless, we have to think not only as a county, but we have to think regionally. And I think that we need to look at what the transit plans would be and how do we fund them to the best of our ability without having to go to the taxpayer? Uh, if we're able to do that, uh, I'm all for, uh, you know, looking at it from a bonding perspective. But I think the conversation may be one that we may need to not only speed up, but I think we need to become more part of the conversation. I think we need to have the discussions on what we need to do and how it impacts not only Fulton County, but all of those sister counties that are around us. I think the collaboration needs to be just a little bit tighter, but as far as, the question says, which of the following three funding mechanism, uh, mechanisms are more... says, which of the following three funding mechanisms are most favored, I think that's a hard question, at least for me, to answer at this point without further information. Because I would want to see which one would be the best one for the taxpayer. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? No? All right, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. I think we are at a point to draw to a conclusion and summarize, so I'll attempt to do that and ask my team to add anything that I missed. First of all, thank you very much for your engagement and robust discussion. I think we gleaned a lot from this. As we indicated upfront, there would be no decisions called for today. Any decisions would come back in the next board meeting and subsequent ones. So to give you what I think is a good preview of coming attractions for that, where hopefully this is clear, I think the strategic plan would be on the next board meeting for adoption, because I think that was pretty much discussed, and there wasn't any further necessity for changes in that. On the list of items for potential sounding, soundings, what I would suggest is that we try to chunk those out. Some are absolutely ready for you to make a decision on. A classic one would be QLS. There's not really a lot of debate, it's not a lot of money, it's straightforward and has somewhat of a historical precedent. Others, specifically the sheriff and DA had wanted to come, I think in the second meeting in September, that was the indication I got from the DA. So before you acted on a significant increase in positions and monies for them, I think they wanted to be in front of you anyway, so that one's probably better served in September. The warehouse with the two alternatives, I think, should come back in the next meeting. So what we'll do is try to go and chunk those up in a way that makes sense when they're ready for you to decide upon them. And now, though, you've seen the entire total context, these are all the things that have come in, here's the source of funding. But the one thing always to remember with that, which I've said many times here, is that it's easy to do it in the current year, because we always are going to underrun, and we've shown you what that underrun looks like. Where it becomes more difficult is when it goes into the next year. So just keep in mind, and we will try to posture as we present these decisions, what kind of call you're making on the next year, not just what you're taking out of the current year. Hopefully that makes sense. So we'll present those with that information where you can have complete context. So, Mr. Chairman, I think we, again, we're ready to conclude without any further questions.
Any closing comments, questions? No? I didn't use my minute. Any closing comments? If not, without objection, we adjourn and thank all of you for your attendance and participation today. Thank you. Yeah, that's, these things, that's not a net, you got two flies over here. All right, come on, huh?
For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.